At this time, I would like to call the school board meeting to order. I welcome each of you tonight to the April 19th school board meeting. Anyone wishing to address the board may do so during public input. You will have three minutes to address the board. The sign in sheet to speak during public input is on the table to the left as you enter the boardroom. Our school board minutes tonight are being recorded by Ms. Bishop. Board members present would include Mr. Carroll, Ms. Bell, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Williamson, and myself, Art Alfred. Our attorney is present, Mr. Reeves, and Ms. Joseph, the superintendent. At this time, we'll proceed with a moment of silence and then proceed with the pledge of allegiance. If you'll please stand, please. Okay, at this time, we'll proceed with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I would like to welcome each of you to tonight's meeting. There has been some amendments to the agenda. We're adding a 4.2 under the consent items, boys to king, trip to, or joint use agreement with the bus, a total of $65 to Pineetta, Florida on April the 24th, 2021. That's 4.2 under consent items. We're adding a 6.8, excuse me, Chromebook quote under individual items of consideration, a 6.8 Chromebooks quote. I'm sorry, 5.8. It's cut off there, and I'm sorry, 5.8. Chromebooks quote. And there is a 5.9 hospital homebound instructor for the district. Okay, are there any questions concerning the amendments? The item that I am pulling is 5.4, the scholarship ID and access system. That is being pulled tonight, 5.4. So let me review and go back over. Just to clarify, the consent item is 4.2, boys to king, a total of $65 for a joint use bus agreement to Pineetta, Florida on April the 24th. 5.8 Chromebooks quote, 5.8, and 5.9 hospital homebound instructor. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent items? Under the consent items, we have the minutes. We have the minutes from April 5th meeting and the minutes of the executive session and the 4.2, the boys to king, joint use agreement with the district and use of a bus.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, thank you. Excuse me just for a moment. Is there any public input or comments? Okay, there's none tonight. I'm sorry, I got ahead there. Guess I was not seeing anyone. Okay, so there's no public comment, so we'll proceed with the consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent items.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Is there further discussion concerning the items? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. 5.1 personnel changes, Dr. Blue.
Good evening, brother chair and board members. I ask that the board approve 5.1 personnel changes at this time, please.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I move to approve.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Ms. Bell for approval. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Bell. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
Thank you, brother chair.
Thank you. 5.2, permission to advertise policy changes?
All right, brother chair and board members. We had quite a bit of policy changes. We had 15 policies that had to be updated. If you look at the policies, a lot of the policies wasn't changed. It was just the verbiage. They changed a lot of the verbiage in the policies. But if you would like, I would go through the policies and give you an overview of each policy, if you would like for me to do that on tonight.
If, if I would like, if you would maybe say the policy number and what the title is?
Yes.
For the, for the listeners at home and for people who maybe aren't homebound.
And we're not voting to approve these tonight. We're voting to advertise.
Yes, ma'am. So if you would like, I will go through them.
Yeah, that would be, that would be nice.
Okay, all right. Policy 0165.1, that deals with agendas for meetings. Policy 0164 is a notice of meetings. Policy 0165 is for meetings. Policy 0166 is exempt meetings. Policy 0166 is about workshops. Policy 2260.01 is against discrimination based on disability. Policy 2266, non-discrimination on the basis of sex and educational programs and activities. Policy 5610.01 is emergency removal of students. Policy 5724, preparation of voter reservation, reserate, reger-
Okay.
Yes.
Registration.
Yeah, registration. Policy 6320, purchase and contracts for commodities and contractual services. Policy 7100 is facility planning. Policy 744001 is video surveillance and electronic monitoring. Policy 8450, protective face covering during pandemic. And policy 8500 is food service program. And policy 8510 is wellness. And that's our 15 policies that we want permission to advertise at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Blue. Do I have a motion to approve or to approve the permission to advertise the policy changes?
I made the motion to advertise policy changes.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Is there any discussion? Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Williamson. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
Thank you, brother chair.
Thank you, Dr. Blue. Okay, we've pulled 5.4, or 5.3 is a purchase of school buses. Ms. Joseph?
Okay, Mr. Chair, we know we need some school buses and we've got some prices. When we were first going down this road, we were looking at getting Ursa money to purchase the school buses. But, and as you will see in the presentation later on tonight, they are not letting us purchase money buses with Ursa. But Ms. Rayneck is trying to find a variance to that rule. But we are asking to purchase three school buses at approximately $112,000 each. Recently, we had seven dead buses out there we got rid of. So that's why you see the parking lot doesn't look as full. They were just out there in the way. And so we scrapped them. And they actually went to the junkyard, to the scrap iron place. They were just in the way.
What, so what fund is this coming out of?
Right now, it's coming out of general fund until we can find something else. But we've got to have buses.
Right.
We are looking for other avenues, but right now, we don't have anything else.
These are the real big buses, true?
Seventy-seven capacity.
Seventy-seven a passenger.
Okay, and the regular bus is sixty-six?
I don't know.
It's seventy-two, I think. I mean, I think a seventy-two passenger nowadays is a-
Okay.
These are the real big buses. And the reason that we're bringing them here is early, hopefully, if we even, because when you order, they have to do some kind of process and hopefully, we can get these by September. Well, that's already two, maybe, to get them a little quicker. Two or three.
So the request is for two or three?
I'm going to request three. I don't always go down, but I can't go up. If I find the funding, I'll do three, but I know we're going to find the funding for two. I just won't have to come back to you and find the funding for three.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bus purchase for two, to three buses?
I'll make the motion to approve the bus purchases.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion?
How, how do they, I mean, is that, is that a bid of the state or, I mean, how you get those?
This is state contract, the state contract, you do not have to bid.
So, I mean, but that's the, the state sends that out and that's, everybody gets that price?
It doesn't send it out, but you-
But everybody gets that price?
But what happens is the state will bid it out and then they get the best price that they can get and then we're allowed to buy on that same price.
I got you.
Now, we're, we're perfectly free to bid out our buses if we want to bid them out, but we're not required to, we can go over that state contract price.
But you are correct. Over a certain amount, we have to bid. If it, if it wasn't under this contract, we wouldn't have bid.
Under the state contract, I got you.
Now, buses don't fall under this non-recurring money that's coming in, then?
Buses, like I said, she's going to do her presentation later on. Ursa money, right now, we cannot purchase a bus under Ursa. And the reason I said two or three, Ms. Rayneck is looking for some loopholes that we could possibly get a variance. And if she does, we'll be able to get three.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. 5.4, the scholarship ID access system has been pulled. 5.5, the K-12 lift system, subscription, I'm sorry. K-12 lift subscription, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, what we have here, and this will be paid for out of the Ursa funding. Here is funding, it's not coming out of general fund. And it's a quasi data mining system, or we call it a data disaggregation system. And we will have, they will be able to compare our state assessments with our progress monitoring and help us drill down and help us monitor the students and their performance. And it will drill down even to the student level. And they will come out and they will do training with us.
Yes.
And it looked to me like it was just the 2021, 2022 school year was all we're committing ourselves to.
Yes.
This is a really good program. I'm familiar with it from where I work. They do a great job analyzing relevant student data and that provides context and generates conversation to establish opportunities for improvement for the students. It also helps in identifying strategies to help reach the student to move them to the next level. And they project where the students are, like level ones, projected to be twos, threes, what have you. So I do think it will add a much needed piece to the teachers, of being able to help go over the data they have to see where the kids are moving toward. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the K-12 lift subscription.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Williamson. Is there any discussion over the K-12 lift subscription?
This be for just one year?
Yes. Okay, if we like and we decide to use it further, it will not be as much in the 22, 23 year because we will already have done the initial setup fee. And right now, we can pay for this with Ursa funding. It's not coming out of general fund.
That was my question too, and that's on page one of the proposal. Is it's going from July 2021 through June 2022?
But you don't have to renew it if you don't need?
No, you don't.
Okay, I got you.
Well, I'm glad to hear Mr. Alfred's input.
No, it's very, it's very systematic and very, very-
It's deliberate.
It's very descriptive to what, or prescriptive to what, where the students at and what their potential is for being a level one, two. And they color code it for the teacher where they can see who's in danger of not reaching the point or whose mastery and, I mean, I, in our world of accountability, I mean, we need to provide them this. We need to provide the teachers this. If we're expecting them to be able to tell who's level one and two and who's moving to the next level, we need to provide them this.
And it costs less than the previous instrument we were using.
Right, it's a, it's a good, and the thing that we've noticed is there's a lot of personal support from the company that comes and meets with teachers and tells them of strategies that they could do to help move the kids to the next level. So it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Williamson. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. 5.6, Dr. Blue, is instructional recommendations. And I would like to make a change on the second page. Cynthia Hernandez should be Cynthia Matthews. So as you're looking at it, Cynthia Hernandez on the second page of instructional should be Cynthia Matthews, being recommended for approval. Okay, is there a motion to approve the instructional recommendations?
I made the motion to approve the instructional recommendation for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Williamson. It's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Williamson. Is there any further discussion concerning instructional recommendations for the 2021, 2022 school year? Okay, if there's none, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, 5.7, non-instructional recommendations. And there's two changes to that. On the very last page of the non-instructional, we have some retirements. And Kim Washington's effective date of retirement is 6/30/2021. And Leroy James's effective date is 6/30/2021 also. On the, on the sheet that was presented, it has a different date. But their, their official date of retirement for Ms. Washington is 6/30/2021 and Mr. James is 6/30/2021. And we also have Rose Smith retiring Charles Walker and Deborah Simmons. Okay, is there a motion to approve the non-instructional recommendations?
I move to approve the non-instructional recommendations for 2021, 22. It would include the changes between Washington on 6/30/21 and Leroy James on 6/30/21.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Bell. Is there any discussion concerning it? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
Thank you, brother chair and board.
Thank you, Dr. Blue, for the non-instructional recommendation. Okay, 5.8, Chromebook quote.
I'm going to let Mr. Corbett go with it.
This is the same quote that came last meeting. The quote that was presented last meeting, it had already expired when we tried to place the order and about three or four weeks ago, Google increased their license cost. And so that we couldn't place, we couldn't process the order. So we had, bringing it back, there's a $12,000 increase to cover the new license pricing.
Okay. And this is a one-time payment? We're going to pay this sum sometime?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And this is being paid out of the Ursa funds?
Yeah.
It's not coming from general fund?
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Chromebook quote?
I made the motion to approve the Chromebook quotes.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. It's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Is there any further discussion?
These 14 hundred, that's for everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's how many kids we got, 14 hundred?
Well, we, we have some, these are to replace the ones that are going out of date.
I got you.
Okay, is there any further, our questions? No more questions? Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval for the Chromebook quote. Thank you. Okay, 5.9, Ms. Joseph, hospital homebound instructor. Ms. Lily Moore is being recommended for the homebound instructor, instructor for the district.
We have a special needs student that is going on homebound instruction this week. And it's our duty to provide an adequate education for them and we do not have a student, a teacher in this category. And so we need her recommended so she can begin lessons with the child.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the hospital homebound instructor?
I'll make the motion to approve Ms. Lily Moore as the homebound instructor.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Mr. Carroll. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, items, 6.1 superintendent items, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, Mrs. Superintendent and board members, I know you've been hearing a lot about this, Carroll's money, Ursa release money. We did receive a lot of funds. We do not have free reigns in this money. Ms. Lisa Roderick is going to do a short presentation to you about the amount of money we've got and possible uses of the money, what we plan on doing. And as of today, right now, we do not have the funds, but hopefully, we will start getting some soon because we are making our list.
Okay, so this new grant is called the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, or as we know it, SRT. And SRT is giving us, it was signed into law on December 27th of 2020, and it gave the US as a whole, our school districts, 54.3 billion. Now, that then goes to, of course, the state agencies and the state agencies decide exactly how they're going to kind of parcel that out, even though they're given exact guidelines by USCD. So the next part is looking at the allocation. Now, our overall allocation is a little over $4.5 million. However, from that, we have to take and allocate to our charter schools based on survey three numbers, which changes our total for our five schools to three point, a little over 3.5 million. Now, we just got some notification from DOE last week that there's some legislative implications though. So even though it looks like we're getting these millions of dollars, FDOE told us that, the exact quote was, "Districts should carefully monitor the 2021 legislative session in the event that there are temporary adjustments to districts' reoccurring appropriations in the 2021 General Appropriation Act." This means legislature can very well decide to change those allocations to fill gaps that may be in the budget that will end up lessening our actual allocation. They also might decide, and this is very important to consider, they can decide that districts now have to use these funds to fill those gaps that they normally would, that'll be left in our FEFP funding. So they may say, okay, we are giving you this money. However, we can't provide you X amount of dollars per student. You're going to- X amount of dollars per student, you're gonna have to take some of this money and put that, and fill that gap. So our 3.5 million could end up being 1.5 million or 2 million after all is said and done. We really don't know right now. So we just need to be real careful in our plans and what we say we're going to do or think that we might do. We just need to have everything be very tentative right now. The next piece is what they told us is unallowable. So what they told us are unallowable things, some of these are very basic and you hear them on all brands, things like entertainment. Obviously, they're not going to let us go to Disney World with the children, as much as we might like to take them, we can't go. Any meals, refreshments, celebrations and parties, game systems, out-of-state travel without DOE approval, overnight field trips, incentives, gift cards, decorations, advertisements, anything that's promotional or marketing, any purchase of facilities and vehicles, which is where the issue with buying buses came up, because that was new, they added that in afterwards, afterwards. Land acquisition, kitchen appliances, tuition, capital improvements, organizational dues, and clothing and uniforms. The only exception to our clothing and uniforms comes with our homeless students. If we have a student in transition and we decide that that's something we wanted to provide for a school uniform type of thing, that's the only time it's allowable. So now we're gonna look at our spending allowances. So we send in our assurances stating that we will follow what they tell us we have to, and they give us a guideline. And essentially, this list lays out what we said we would do. So we have to do anything that's allowed under ESEA, IDEA, Adult Ed, Perkins, McKinney-Vento, and coordination and preparing response efforts with like state and public health departments, how we've done with COVID-19 with our health department, that would be if we had to pay for that, we could, we could use funds from this. Providing principals and school leadership resources that they need to address their concerns for their schools, activities to address the needs of low-income students, students with disabilities, our English learners, racial, ethnic minorities, students in transition in our foster care youth, any professional development for staff, especially on sanitation and minimizing the spread of infectious disease, any supplies we need to sanitize and clean the facilities, any planning, coordinating, and implementing activities for long-term closures, purchasing technology, providing mental health services, summer learning after-school programs, anything to address learning loss, school facility repairs and improvements that help reduce the risk of virus transmission, and improving indoor air quality. Now, because of what's allowed, and then meeting with our principals and also our district administrators and looking at the data, we came up with our plan. So our plan is to bring in some more custodians this summer to help overall sanitize the schools before school starts. Purchasing technology for students and teachers to use in the classroom or at home if they are quarantined, hiring additional paraprofessionals to help work in small groups with academic at-risk students. We're gonna hire a truancy person that can go to the homes and find what DOE is calling our missing students, the kids that went home last spring and we've had a hard time locating. Purchasing supplemental math curriculum, hiring a community outreach person that's gonna assist the district in bridging connections between school and the community, allocating funds for the schools to offer after-school or to help with learning and law, learning loss and those learning gaps, purchasing new AC units to give us better air quality inside of our schools, hiring an RTI STEM and early literacy coach to help teachers in these areas, an additional PE teacher so we can keep the numbers lower in our PE classes, allocating summer school funding to help make up for those learning loss and gaps that students have, giving professional development to our pairs that are using leveled literacy instruction in the elementary grades, paying for progress monitoring in more areas than just reading and math, hiring two kindergarten teachers for students who did not attend pre-K, paying for an embedded parent and family professional development for teachers and leadership to help bridge the school-home gap. Now, the rationale behind all of this came from looking at the highest needs in our data. We know this year, last year was not a typical year at all, and it did cause a lot of our students that had no internet access and didn't have the family support to lose a lot in their learning. So we know that it's a lot higher than any typical year this year when it comes to learning loss. That means there's a need for a lot more support. So our principals evaluated their needs and they begged us for more help to work with their students. The AC units are in desperate need of changing to improve the air quality in our school for our students and our staff. The professional development is always needed, but now more than ever because of that learning loss and the changes in student attendance. It's totally different year for these teachers. I know from being in a classroom, I've never had to go through a pandemic and try to figure out, now how do I address what may have been a three-month loss that's now a one-year loss, and do it all in one or two years. So it's really important that we support them now and let them have what our data and our principals say they need. Anybody have any questions?
So it's very iffy, actually, the bottom line, so.
As far as the bottom line on the number of, the amount of money we're gonna get, yes.
So we're not on easy street and we have to watch our.
No, not at all.
Is there a priority list, like if we don't get this amount and can't do all these things, which one would you kind of call back on?
Yes, and obviously, AC units is a high priority because air quality.
We've been needing those for a few years.
They needed them, and now with it being an air quality issue and, you know, virus transmission, because we don't have a vaccine for our youth. I mean, they're looking at, you know, 16 and up for one, but that leaves everybody else still being at risk of getting quarantined and everything else throughout the year. So we wanna try to lessen and minimize that as much as possible. So obviously, that would be a very big one. Learning loss is going to be your second one. Anything tied to that learning loss that's gonna help these kids move up, that's where our principals and the data says we need to spend our money.
As we get more information, we'll share it with you, but I want you to be in on the ground floor as we get this and as we make plans and let you know where we're going.
And as you all are aware, you can always call me if a question comes up that you think of later, you can always give me a call, I'm happy to pick up my phone and talk.
Is there a time that we will know for sure what we're gonna get?
I'm hoping that time is near, but we're gonna, what they're doing is.
When the legislature ends?
When legislature ends, I think we'll truly find out. They're looking at this being for the 21-22 school year, so I know DOE isn't in a super big rush to give us that number right now, but I'm hoping that as soon as that ends, shortly thereafter, we will have a definite number.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other recent development that has occurred, last year, in the midst of pandemic, our kids did not have to take those FSA tests, and therefore, the seniors were exempt from having mandatory for, that being a requirement for graduation. But because of the lag time and the massive learning loss that has occurred, and several kids have been home, the state has reinstituted that, so the 12th grade graduation requirements for your FSA, math, and Algebra I and ELA, they, they are exempting them from that this year. Also, our third graders are being exempted from having to achieve a Level 1 on that ELA reading. Now, there are, we are still admitting the tests, and there are some other things that we'll tell you about as they develop, but we are. That's it, Mr. Chair. A reminder about next Monday night at 5:00, we're having a board workshop.
Back, just a question concerning, although third grade is not being held against it, but are we, are we being proactive if we have a student who is a Level 1 in third grade in reading? Are we still retain and go to summer school?
We're having conferences about them, we are off in summer school, but just automatically retention, no, we're not doing that. Because the results of the test aren't supposed to be back, they're due back by July 30. And we got out of school June 30.
But we should know from, from already data, students who are at real school being a Level 1.
All the ones that have taken it, but if they're home, they may not have taken it.
That's true. Okay. So is that all the superintendent items?
That's all.
Okay. Mr. Carroll? I'm sorry.
I had two things. The first is, as y'all recall, we had in a lawsuit with the right-ofPassage service supplier, the board had authorized me to send a proposal to them to settle. They, we did that, they let the time run on that without accepting it. We have, at the beginning of the lawsuit, we filed a motion to dismiss because I think what they, the way they pleaded it is not, is not right. But since they declined to accept our proposal for settlement, I went ahead and noticed our motion to dismiss for a hearing that's set for July 1, and so we'll be moving forward with the case. Hopefully, we still get it resolved, but I mean, we gotta do something, we gotta get off, get off this on that. So any questions on that case?
So we go for a notice, we have a hearing July the 1st?
Have a hearing July the 1st, and then the outcome of that hearing will be we can, we can start moving forward with the case otherwise. They, they had several counts in their complaint, at least one of which I think is not appropriate and will probably be dismissed. The count for breach of contract, I, I think they can plead it, I don't think they're going to be successful on it, but they can plead it, that there really was a contract, they are asserting that we breached it. And so then that would go to trial where you present evidence and the judge will decide who, who the judge agrees with. I don't think we've actually breached that contract, but that's the, that's the ostrich setup. The other thing was, the last meeting, you all had requested that I look at the sales taxes for the, possibly for athletic facilities. We do have the ability to levy a half penny sales tax, it's in section 212055, parent 6, it's called the school capital outlay tax. It cannot exceed a half a penny, and it has to be approved by a vote of the electors, countywide vote of the electors, and then it can be used for fixed capital expenditures, and I'm reading from the statute, fixed capital expenditures or fixed capital costs associated with construction, reconstruction, or improvement of school facilities and campuses which have a useful life expectancy of five or more years. So it does seem like that, what we were talking about before, where you're redoing a track, you're doing the field and all of that. What you have to do is, if you want to try to levy that tax, you gotta have a resolution that says we want to levy the tax, attach to that resolution as a plan, where you tell them, the people, if you all approve this tax, we will use the money for this, and you know, set out your plan, and it can be all kinds of things. I think in this case, if y'all wanted to, it could be the athletic facilities, what you're talking about. But then it has to be approved by a vote of the electors. Now, and ordinarily, what you do is, you take those questions and you put it on the ballot for an election that you're having anyway. If we do that, then it doesn't cost anything. If we try to have a special election just for that one question, then the school board would end up paying for the special election. And so normally, you would do that at a, at a regular election, although I think the board would have the authority to have a special election if you wanted to. The ordinarily, in, in years past, and the immediate past year is not a good example because that was COVID and all of that, but in years past, a half penny brought, I think between about $400,000 to $500,000 in, over a year. So that is certainly an option. Our next regularly scheduled countywide election that I am aware of is in 2022.
Now, Tommy, we don't get the, if that's how much that half cent levies, it all doesn't come to us, does it? Doesn't the charter schools get their share?
The charter schools do get a share, thank you. That, that was just changed this past, I think this past session, it was just changed, and they break out according to FTE.
I've got a question, can we levy a half-cent tax on top of another existing half-cent tax?
This would be in addition to all other half-cent taxes, or all other sales taxes that are levied right now. So right now, I think we're at, the total is like 7.5%. This would take you up to 8% for all counties, and it'd be effective throughout county. And also, you would have, as part of your plan, you would have, you would set the, when the tax goes away, so you might say, we're gonna have a tax for two years, let's say, and just take that money and then apply it to the facilities or, you know, but, but it would have to have an end date. And, and what that breakout is between charter and the.
Between the three charter schools, they probably have a fourth of the kids in this county.
Yep. Most things that we share with Charlie is done by FTE, so that's most proportionally we're doing it.
Now, would this have to be approved by the board?
But the process would be.
To get it started.
If y'all were interested in doing that, what you would do is, you enact, you'd tell me, hey, this is what we wanted, I drafted up a resolution and a plan according to whatever y'all told me. You would approve that resolution, and then that resolution would then instruct the supervisor election to put a question on the ballot, that question has to be voted, if it passes, the tax goes into effect, if it does not pass, the tax does not go into effect. Normally, and I'm not 100% sure with this one, but I know with the county, when we've done it in the past, the taxes go into effect January 1. So if this were approved in 2020 at one of those general elections, you'd expect it, the, the increase in sales tax to occur January 1, 2023.
It's real hard to tax people during these times, it's real hard to ask people to pay more taxes during these times.
Sure.
And, you know, so many people's.
Especially when you're in poverty.
Just lost their jobs and lost hours and stuff, and we are the national, or not the national, the local, the local average income for Madison County, work in Madison County is below poverty, but it's, it's hard to do.
So anyway, I just present that out as a, as a tool you have in your toolbox, so I'm not trying to say that the, the decision of whether to enact a tax course is a policy decision for y'all to discuss among yourselves as board members and decide what's on your interest. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Reeves? Mr. Carroll, anything?
I appreciate you looking at that.
Yes, sir.
You know, and I know it's hard to ask people, but, you know, they get, they get a chance to vote on it, so, you know, they can, they can say yay or nay, you know, if they don't want to do it. But, you know, we got to find some way to help our kids, and ultimately, that's what they're, it's about, is them. And so, but on the, so none, none of the CARES, because I've talked to several different counties about the CARES Act money. Hamilton County, I know, used some of theirs to fix their track because of safety purposes. And so, you know, they were allowed to use it because of safety. And then Leon County, some of theirs, I talked with some of them, and they was able to use some of that for doing some safety stuff according to their athletic person over there. So, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm just saying what, you know, when I called around about, you know. So, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying what, you know, when I call around about, you know, I know, I know where I'm at. They are allowing them to build a field house. Now, this is federal money. It's not a state. They're allowing them to build a field house with the money because the locker rooms are small. It makes them bigger, therefore, the kids can get further apart, that sort of thing. So I'm just, you know, I think there's some avenues out there that we could explore on some of that, too. I don't know if we're going to get any or if we're not going to get any, but, you know, I think, I think it's worth just looking into some. That's all I got.
Okay, Ms. Bell?
The only thing I would like to know, if, do you have the dates for the different graduations at the different schools, for each school?
I've got tentative dates. It's not finalized yet. Anyone in particular? Or you want me to read all of them?
If you could read all of them.
Okay. Starting at the bottom, James Madison Graduation is on June fifth. Wake Forest Graduation is on June fourth. The High School Graduation is on June fourth. Central's eighth grade graduation is on June third. Our parents... No, that's Academy. I'm sorry. That's Cleveland Arts Academy is on June third. Central's on June second. Greenville is on June second, and Lee is on June second. I don't know where Pineapple is. Pineapple is on June first. Okay, that's what we have so far.
You'll send that to us?
Yeah.
For that time comes.
We're working on this, and when I get it, I was going to send it to you, and I'll have it at the next meeting.
Could you possibly ask the ones who have the same day if they can maybe do, I mean, it's their, it's their choice to do it whatever time, but it's hard for us to be in multiple places at the same time.
The graduations are all on different days. I don't have any graduation on the same day. Some of the awards programs overlap, but the graduations do not overlap.
Okay, okay.
I'm going to finalize this, and I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Because we've got some other trainings I need to bring before you all start the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Bell? Ms. Gibson?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Roderick for the information you provided, and Mr. Reeves, thank you for what you've also done, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I too would like to thank Ms. Roderick for the information provided and remind everyone that next Monday at five, we have, we meet again to go over some information that Ms. Joseph is bringing to us and continue to wish the students and faculty good luck with the FSA testing. We're in that window right now, so that'll be going till through May, so...
Yep.
We're going on through it, so I wish them luck and as we, as we wind down the year. That's all I have. Ms. Williamson?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. There's nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. All those in favor, show a hand please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for adjournment.